Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our special public board meeting of Tuesday, October 11th, 2022, of the Nishamani School Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Burns, may I have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Hollenbach?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mrs. Lafferty?
Here.
Mr. Sorillo?
Here.
Mr. Sporny?
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan? We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. We'll all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Ms. Burns, do we have any announcements?
No announcements.
None moves to our board business of this evening. I'm going to read the purpose of this meeting. Under Pennsylvania School Code, the Board of School Directors has the authority to fill vacancies on its board from a particular region by approving the appointment of a qualified applicant. The appointment can stand until the first Monday in December after the next municipal election. At the September 13th, 2022, public meeting, the board voted to establish a procedure for the appointment, and today, we are taking the final steps in that procedure to approve an appointee from Region One. First public comment will take place on the potential appointment. Second, each qualified applicant may address the board and the public this evening. After each applicant speaks, the board members may publicly ask the applicant questions. Lastly, the board will accept nominations from its board members, and then a vote on nominees will take place in the order that the applicants were successfully nominated. If the appointment is successful, the Honorable Denise Bowman is here to swear in the new board member. At this time, nominations are now in order for a school director to fill the vacant seat on this board. I open up to nominations.
Aren't we supposed to have them come up and talk?
I knew I was going to screw that up right from the get-go. I apologize, folks. We had three candidates with us tonight who provided the board with resume and letters of intent. I'm going to call them up, or Ms. Burns, if you could. Do you have this? No. All right, I will call you to the podium.
And I will, when they come up, I'll ask them what they should state or state at the beginning.
All right. First, I have Mr. Carlos Rodriguez.
And Mr. Rodriguez, when you begin, could you obviously state your name and where you reside and how long you've lived there, your current occupation, if you have one, and if you hold any other public offices?
I have to push this.
Yep.
Name is Carlos Rodriguez, resident of Feasterville, been there for approximately 15 years. Currently work at Salish University, where I'm Director of Security for the university.
Do you hold any other public offices at this time? Okay. Thank you, you can, you can go on.
All right. Well, good evening, Dr. McGee, President Allen, fellow board members, and the community that's here this evening. As I mentioned earlier, my name is Carlos Rodriguez. I have been a resident of Feasterville for the past 15 years. My wife Jessica and I have a daughter who currently attends Pecasum Middle School. As I mentioned in my letter, I'm very thankful and blessed that our daughter has had the opportunity to grow in the Nishamani School District. And I want her to continue to achieve her educational and personal goals while she continues to attend this wonderful school district. I spent most of my career in law enforcement and security. Currently, I've been employed in a higher education setting over the past 15 years. I have an in-depth knowledge of interaction with school administration, parents, and students. I maintain a strong fiscal approach to budgeting and believe in maintaining a professionalism in all interactions. With that being said, I would first like to start with recognizing the mission statement for the Nishamani School District. The Nishamani community builds futures by empowering each child to become productive citizens and a lifelong learner. I firmly believe in this mission statement. I believe it really highlights why each and every one of us are here this evening. Wouldn't you all agree? When landing of the vacancy for my region, I knew that this was a great opportunity for me to expand my involvement in our community. I understand that as a board member, it's our duty to see that current and future students have a system that provides the students with the necessary skills and tools they need to become productive members of society, while we still are mindful of what the public can afford each fiscal year. As a parent, I know that having our children receive the best education possible is important. I also believe that in order for our students to obtain the best, we need to really rely on the administrators and the teachers to educate our children. We need them to do everything possible so that the students within the Nishamani School District have the necessary skills for life but reflect the standards that make our community better. Each and every student should be provided with the necessary educational resources that will allow them to be productive in the classroom and within their community. I know the importance of keeping our children safe so that their focus can be maintained on their education and their personal goals by working their way to achieve educational excellence that the Nishamani School District provides. It provided the opportunity, I'm confident that I would be an excellent addition to the school board. I am eager to work alongside each and every one of you, and I want to learn your views and your challenges. I want to, most importantly, I'm eager to work for the parents and the students who attend the Nishamani Schools within Region One. I understand that this will not be an easy task, but I am capable and willing to accept the challenge, and I thank you for your time and hope that you will consider me when you decide this evening who will be the best person to represent Region One. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. I open, if you would mind entertaining questions from the board, if there should be any?
Hi, Mr. Rodriguez, Tina Hollenbach, Region One.
Hi, Ms. Hollenbach.
Hello. So my question is, do you plan on seeking an endorsement and running again next year for the open seat when it becomes available?
I would definitely seek to be considered, obviously, and I would run if that spot is available and, obviously, if I'm given that opportunity, then I would definitely seek, you know, to advance longer in the position. You're welcome. Anybody else?
Seeing none, thank you much.
Thank you, everyone.
Have your seat, please. And I call Mr. Joshua Feinberg to the podium, please.
And Mr. Feinberg, could you also state your residence and how long you've lived there, your current occupation, if you have one, and if you hold any public office currently?
I'm going to forget some of that, so I'll find out. All right, so Joshua Feinberg, resident of Langhorne, for just over five years now. Occupation?
If you have one.
Yeah, Director of Student Services for a charter organization in Philadelphia. And?
And you currently hold a public office?
No public office. Okay. Good? Good, okay. All right. Good evening, Board Directors, Dr. McGee, and the Nishamani community. My name is Joshua Feinberg, and I'm a resident of Langhorne. It is with great interest that I am applying for the Region One Board of Director vacancy for the Nishamani School District. As a highly skilled and experienced educational practitioner, I have served in various roles, both in district and public charter school settings. In these roles, I have designed, oh, that was weird. In these roles, I have designed, implemented various student support systems and coordinated large-scale initiatives to support student success. In my current role as Director of Student Services, I oversee special education, school counseling, social work services, school-based therapy, and academic interventions. I have been attending board meetings, I have been attending board and committee meetings for quite some time now, and during these meetings, I often wish I was able to add ideas and their suggestions for district growth. I believe all systems, no matter what they are, can be approved upon, and school systems are no different. I moved into Nishamani because I believe it is a great school system, and both my kids attend Tuwanka. I also feel we can grow as a district to propel Nishamani ahead of our local school districts. I think life is often about being in the right place at the right time. Last month, I happened to be attending a board meeting, and it was noted that Region One was going to have a vacancy. I immediately thought this was an opportunity to contribute to our district, one I could not pass up, so I chose to apply. My drive for continuous improvement and being a contributing member is what I would bring to the Nishamani School District. The experiences I have gained through working in elementary, middle, charter schools, and most recently, central office, provide me with a distinctive insight to student growth in both academics and, most importantly, social-emotional learning. These experiences have also given me awareness into some of the challenges that exist today with our students. In closing, my passion to improve student outcomes and support district schools will only enhance my determination to support the mission of the Nishamani School District, specifically the Board of Directors. As a member of the Board of Directors, my goals would be twofold. One, always put the best interests of our students first, and two, determine how our decision or a decision will impact the taxpayers of the Nishamani community. Thank you for your time and consideration for the Region One Board of Directors vacancy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Feinberg. Open the board up. Questions, comments?
Hi, Josh, Tina Hollenbach. Do you plan on looking for an endorsement and running for the seat when it becomes open next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Seeing none, thank you. Thank you. And I now call Dr. Tricia Lorig to the podium. Hope I said that correctly.
You did. Congratulations.
And Dr. Lorig, just repeat where you live, how long, your current occupation, and if you currently hold public office elsewhere.
Okay. My name is Dr. Tricia Lorig. My husband and I have owned our home on Westbrook Road in Feasterville for the last 12 years, and I am a family practice physician. I do not hold any other elected office. Good evening to the board, and Dr. McGee, and to the community. As I said, my name is Tricia Lorig, and I am a family physician in northeast Philadelphia. I have been at the same practice for the last 19 years, which I think shows my dedication to sticking with my community. I wanted to talk a little bit about why I decided to put my resume in for this position. I actually did submit it when it was open in April. However, I got that information late and did not realize I could not submit it via email, so I missed the deadline. But I wasn't making that mistake this time. I was raised by a single parent in Ben Salem, went to Catholic school, which she worked really hard to put me through at that time. But my mom was not able to be involved as much because she was working very hard to afford that education. And, but one of the things she did heavily distill in me was a sense of responsibility to your community, and that if you have the opportunity to help others, it's your responsibility to do so. And I think that's one of the reasons that I went into medicine, was my desire and responsibility to help other people. So when I found out that there was an opening to assist with the school board and with the school directors, right now, at this point in my life, I am able to do that. I, like I said, I am in private practice, so I'm able to control my life. I'm able to change my schedule when I need to. I am able to, like tonight for this meeting, able to move my schedule around as necessary. So if I need to be on a committee that needs me this particular day, I change my schedule and I work a different day. At the beginning of the pandemic, my husband was laid off from his 26-year career as an engineer, and we decided that, at this point in time, our family is our priority. So I have a stay-at-home parent in my house. So my husband, right now, is our stay-at-home parent for our six-year-old first grader at Tuwanka. So far, we have been very impressive with what we have seen in the Nishamani School District at Tuwanka. But one of the reasons why I wanted to be part of the school board is that I wanted to stay that way. I want Nishamani to stay the way it is, and I'm seeing, in some areas around Nishamani, people using school board director positions as a stepping point in a political career and making our students pawns in those political careers. So one of the reasons that I wanted to step forward in this is to try to keep the educational experience of my daughter, exactly that, an educational experience with everything she possibly can get out of this school district. And I was lucky enough that math and science were my strong suits. So when I was geared toward that in school, that's great. But not every child fits that mold. Not every child is going to be that math geek that I was or that science nerd, and if my daughter wants to be, spend her time in art, or she wants to be a plumber, or she wants to be a car mechanic, I want her to have those options. And I feel like if we start limiting what our students are accessible to in school, then they don't get to make those decisions for themselves. We have a great technical school that is great for those students that don't fit that four-year college mold. And I went to Villages of Murray for high school, and I can tell you that, yes, I was valedictorian because I excelled at math and science, but the girl who graduated 54th out of 54 in my class was brilliant, but she was 54th out of 54. But she didn't fit that mold, and we didn't have that option. Now, Villa's expanded it much differently than it was when I was there, but not everybody fits that mold, and I want to make sure that Nishamani stays the school district that it is, that doesn't start limiting what kids have access to. So that is why I am here in front of you today.
Thank you. Mr. Board, have any questions? Tina does.
Yes.
I have a question. Same question for everybody. Do you plan on seeking an endorsement and potentially running again next year when the seat is open to general election?
I do. I've already actually looked into the process of how you go about getting nominations. If I do know correctly, I think there's two, but one's yours. There, yes. There will be two. But the, I do have every intention on running for the open position, whether I'm nominated tonight or not. I do, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, and they don't need to be signed up, correct? This time, I'd like to open the podium up to the public for any comments on the agenda for this meeting and our candidates. Okay, hearing none. Moving on to nominations are now in order for a school director to fill the vacant seat on this board.
I'd like to nominate Carlos Rodriguez.
Go ahead.
Before we take nominations, can I make a board comment, or no? It's not appropriate? I just wanted to thank all of them for coming regardless of, that was it.
Yeah, I think you can do that.
That was it. As you guys are about to hear, we are getting ready to start nominations. I just wanted to thank the three of you for coming out tonight. It's actually wonderful to see. I've done this twice now, and I've never had as many people come out to even express interest in Lower South to be a school director. So seeing three people come out, I do hope that no matter what happens, when the time comes in the new year, you will consider running because there could potentially be two seats open. So thank you for coming.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbach. Now, I open the floor up for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Carlos Rodriguez.
Does that have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lafferty? Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate.
Hang on one second.
Oh, sorry, so Carlos, that's not in my script. Is there a second? Carlos, Mr. Carlos Rodriguez is now nominated. Are there any other nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Josh Feinberg.
Does that nomination have a second? Hearing none. Nomination fails. Are there any other nominations?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Dr. Lorig.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Dr. Lorig is now nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, I make a motion to close nominations. Does that motion have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sporny. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Nominations are now closed. Now. Do I call for nominations? Okay. Okay. I now make a motion to appoint the first nominee, which was Mr. Carlos Rodriguez, to the Nishamani School District Board of Directors. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Sullivan. We will now have a roll call on the following motion. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of School Directors hereby approves Mr. Carlos Rodriguez to fill the balance remaining of the Region One vacancy through December 2023. Ms. Burns, do we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Allen?
No.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbach?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
No.
Mrs. Lafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Sorillo?
Yes.
Mr. Sporny?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Six yes and two no.
That motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Rodriguez. I'd like to thank the other two members, candidates, for coming out, and as Ms. Hollenbach pointed out, there will be an election in two years. And we...
No, next year.
Next year?
Next year.
That quick?
The petitions will start to be circulated in February.
Okay, so please, keep that in mind. I think we had three very impressive candidates tonight. Thank you. Now we move on to the administration of the oath of office. I'd like to recognize the Honorable Ms. Denise Bowman to administer the oath of office.
Yes. Oh, yes. So I'm just going to tell him that if he wants to abstain, he has to just state why. I'm going to leave the votes for the next meeting, and I'm going to give him a form to fill out. Jennifer needs to make sure she gets his oath that he's signing right now. And now you can, you can have another public comment if you want. Yeah, I mean, you should, it's on the agenda for this meeting, then we close this meeting and then open the next one. Not for this meeting. Not for this meeting.
I'd like to welcome you to the board, Mr. Rodriguez. At this time, does the public have any comments? Hearing none. I'd like to call for, make a motion to adjourn our special meeting. Seconded by Mr. Kovitz.
You can do that one, Adam.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That brings our meeting to a close. Just a minute while we get some paperwork squared away. If you'd like to take five minutes or so, that includes the board. Now I'd like to welcome you to our regularly scheduled programming of our public work session of October 11th, 2022, of the Nishamani School Board. There are board actions to go through this evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order and start again with the roll call. Make sure we all got back from break. Make sure we all got back from break.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mrs. Lafferty?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Servolo?
Here.
Mr. Sporni?
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. And do we, we have any announcements for this meeting?
No announcements.
No announcements. Do I need to read the executive status? Do we have to do the pledge again? No. Okay, moving on. It's not often we have two meetings backed up on each other, though. That brings us to Agenda Item 1.05, our Superintendent's Report. Dr. McGee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I'm sure everybody's aware, but if not, Friday night is a very special event. It's Homecoming 2022, Friday night under the lights. So, in this town, we will be red and blue on Friday. I ask alumni, even if you cannot attend the event, to please wear your red and blue. It might be your last chance to come to Heartbreak Ridge and see natural grass and our concrete monsters that we call the grandstands. So, gates open at 5:30 for the, what's, could be the largest carnival in recent years, and homecoming queen and king will be crowned at halftime. At this point, I'm gonna yield some of my Superintendent's Report time to some students at Maple Point who'd like to talk about a Veterans Day ceremony that's been a tradition here. So, we have, I believe they're both eighth graders, is that correct? Ms. Jillian Rickards and Ms. Ava Robinson. If you ladies would come to the podium, push that button and make the red light come on.
Good evening. I am Jillian Rickards.
And I am Ava Robinson.
Maple Point Middle School will be holding its annual Veterans Day Ceremony on November 10, 2022. We are happy to announce that the ceremony will be held in person again this year in the Maple Point Middle School Auditorium. This is a wonderful way for students of our community to show appreciation for the sacrifices that our local veterans have made and to celebrate the courage of our veterans have shown in defending our country.
The Maple Point staff and students would like to invite veterans in our community to attend the celebration at Maple Point Middle School the morning of November 10. Attendees should arrive in the auditorium lobby at 9:30 a.m. for refreshments and registration. The ceremony will begin at 10:30 a.m. Veterans who are interested in attending should contact Maple Point Middle School at (215) 809-6230, or register online on the Maple Point website. Thank you, and we look forward to seeing you on November 10.
Thank you, ladies. So, these two young ladies are part of a long tradition here at Maple Point, and this is where the flag gets painted on the hill and lit. And then, having the ceremony in person is very, very impressive. I'm glad we can have it back there. They're also part of something they may not have experienced yet that also is an offshoot of this. In the spring last year, I had the honor of attending the Tour of Honor, where busloads of veterans go to Washington, DC and tour the monuments. And the Maple Point students, through the cooperation of the staff and this organization, have joined those veterans to support them along the way. So, last year, I was able to take up an empty seat on the bus, and 50 or 60 kids went down to Washington, DC and honored them, made sure they had everything they needed, water, helped them along the way. It was a very special Sunday that I recall. So, ladies, thank you. You're part of a long tradition, doing something that Maple Point has done well, and that's payback to the community and honor those who have served our country. So, thank you. And Mrs. Foley's hiding in the corner over there. She has a big part to do with this. She has taken on the torch from Ms. Ann Schmidt, who got this going. And if you can get something to stick after you leave, you've done a heck of a job. So, thank you, Mrs. Foley, for continuing on, and thank you, Ann Schmidt, for something you've started. So, thank you, ladies. Mr. Allen, that concludes my Superintendent's Report. Ladies, it's a good time to sneak out if you want to leave, okay?
Thank you, Dr. McGee. And I'd just like to say a quick few words on the Maple Point program for the veterans. I enjoy most everything that goes on in our district that I'm able to attend. I make a particular point to make that event. It's one of my favorites through the year. As a son of veteran, as a nephew of veterans, as a grandson of veterans, I just think it's one of the best events in our community, hands down. So, I'm looking forward to it in person yet again because just it wasn't the same. As fantastic as all other efforts to keep the tradition going, in person is still the best. So, thank you. That brings us to our first round of public comment on tonight's agenda. Hearing none, I close public comment and move to Agenda Item Two, Resolutions. And these are our action items we will be voting on this evening. 2.0 is Certified Staff Appointment. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments for certified staff, and there is one name on the list. Does that motion have a second? Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board? Seeing none, I move to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That, sorry. That motion passes, that motion carries, and we are now a full nine zero. I'm asking as if I can't do the math. Thank you. Moves us to 2.02, Support Staff Appointments. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments for support staff, and there is one name on that list. There are comments. Does that motion have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns from the board? Hearing none, call that motion to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, nine zero. I'll read items that will be for approval at the public meeting. You have 3.01 are our routine business matters. The motions to approve will be presented on the October 25, 2022 public meeting. They will be the minutes, treasures report, check register, and procurement card purchases, investments, exonerations, bids, and budget transfers. 3.02 will be a student settlement agreement. 3.03 are overnight trips, and there are three trips proposed. 3.04 is a project change order process. We will be probably discussing further during facility meeting tomorrow evening, but that will come to vote on the October 15 meeting, if you get there. October 25 meeting, sorry. Does the board have comments, questions, or concerns on any of the above?
I would just like to point out for 3.04, as you just previously stated, I do want to make sure that that is on the agenda tomorrow for a discussion.
Hearing no more. Moving on to our committee reports. Start off with 4.01, Business Operations. Mrs. Hollenbeck, please.
Our next Business Operations meeting will be 6:30 in this room on November 16. I don't have any updates.
Updates on that.
On it yet, so.
6:30, Maple Point. Brings us to 4.02, Educational Development. Ms. Bowman, please.
We will be having a meeting next Tuesday, October 18, 6:30 here in the boardroom.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Facilities and Planning, Mr. Sullivan.
We have a meeting tomorrow night in this room at 6:30 to discuss the various field projects and the new Maple Point School.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. We have Policy Committee, Mr. Servolo.
The next Policy Committee will be held in this room at 6:30 on October 27.
Good, thank you. That brings us to our Representatives' Report, and we go right back to Mr. Servolo for IU Report.
Bucks County, nothing new to report, business as usual.
I thank you. The Nishamani Education Foundation, Mr. Kovitz.
Yes, the Nishamani Education Foundation is holding their Fall Eagle Tickets Raffle. The drawing will be held November 4, and raffle tickets will be available for purchase at Nishamani High School home football games. The prize is two tickets to see the five-and-zero undefeated Philadelphia Eagles play the Green Bay Packers on Sunday, November 27. Applications for the 2022 NEF Classroom Grants are going out this week. All Nishamani teachers and support staff are eligible to apply for classroom, team, or school grants for innovative curricular projects. Grant proposals are due on December 2, and the winners will be announced in mid-December. The next meeting will be held on Monday, October 17, 4 p.m. here at Maple Point. Community members are invited to attend and participate.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. That brings us back to our Pennsylvania School Board Association Liaison, Ms. Bowman.
Yeah, just a brief update to make you aware, board members, that the PSBA website is a great resource, especially since we have some new members on the board. PSBA.org, so, yeah, you guys can check it out.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. That brings us to our Technical School Liaison, Representatives. Mr. Kovitz, do you have a report for us, please?
Sure. The, Mr. Allen and I met a few weeks ago with the tech board, and it was kind of light. There wasn't a whole lot going on, mostly procedural stuff. However, items of note, there is a three-phase, we are now completely through Phase One of a three-phase roofing project to replace and repair the roof. It's going to, the project itself is going to take place over the next two years. It began over the summer, the moment the students left the building, and just recently completed it a few weeks ago. Aside from that, obviously, the Phase Two and Three will start again, the summers, once summer is in session, and that'll go through. And so far, it's been a success, so we're pretty pleased with that. On a somewhat sadder note, our Superintendent, Dr. Paiskey, long-serving Superintendent of the Technical School, has announced that he will be retiring. So, we're kind of bummed about that, and he will be serving out his time through the rest of the school year. We hope to, we hope that will not be the last that we see of him, but he's done an amazing job with the school over the past several years. We will miss him. And then, other than that, the next meeting of the tech board will be October 24, so, at seven o'clock. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. Yes, we were sad to hear, but happy for Dr. Paiskey that he's decided to retire. But a committee has been, well, we'll be using one of our committees, our negotiated committees, to search for his replacement in the coming months. That'll be announced. That brings us to our second round of public comment. The podium is open for anyone who would wish to approach. And again, seeing none, everyone's shy this evening. Fine. I close public comment. Bring us, do we have any future topics, board members? We'll be, to bring to the board's attention. Hearing none. That brings us to Board Comment.
Sure, I'll go. So, I just wanted to mirror something that Ms. Hollenbeck said earlier. I think, first of all, Carlos, welcome to the board. We had, I think, no matter what side of the political spectrum you sit on, I think it's important to be able to appreciate that when we have really good candidates, it's a wonderful thing. I think it's really important that we have, what we put forward, a lot of really good candidates. And I think this time, it was really a pleasurable thing to see three really upstanding folks. And it was, it was a hard, it was a hard decision. But, you know, the last time was easy. We had one person show up, and they got the job. It was that, it was that easy. It's really good to have that kind of healthy competition in stuff like this. So, thank you all. Truly, thank you all for being part of this, and we appreciate everybody being part of that. So, thank you.
I'd just say, welcome, Carlos. Welcome to the board. We appreciate it.
No other board comment. I will just, again, welcome aboard, Mr. Rodriguez. We look forward to working with you. And as I said at the end of our last meeting, I thank everyone who put your name in. It's never easy as a member of the public to put yourself on the line and honestly to serve in a, in such a popular group as a school board can be. So, I thank you. And your opportunity, they come every two years. Every two years in the region. And, you know, it's always healthy to have interest in the board. And without getting myself in too much trouble, I will, a comment that was made, I appreciate that the school board is a job in and unto its. And I think it's important to serve our students well, that those who want to sit in these seats want to for the right reasons. Who has further ambitions, moving up to higher office, if you will, but frankly, this is a pretty darn. And I've said it many, many times, we make a lot of serious community decisions regarding our students. They're our future of our community. And I'll be blunt and say, we make decisions regarding a good chunk of your property taxes. So, it's very important that who you choose to sit in these seats is here for the right reason, for our students in mind and for the community. I look forward to homecoming. Hopefully, I will be home in time to attend. I have yet to make it in person for a game this year. And again, we had the comment on the Veterans Day Ceremony I'm looking forward to. I will take off. I don't care who wants me to work, I'll be there. With that, I'll close this meeting. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hollenbeck. All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Have a great evening.